August 4th, 2025 Crest Hill City Council Meeting to order at 7:00 PM. Everyone will please rise for the Pledge Allegiance to the Flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call please, Chris.
Ray Solomon.
Here.
Jamie Malloy.
I'm here.
Scott Dyke.
Here.
Angelo DiSario.
Here.
Darrell Jefferson.
Here.
Claudia Gazal.
Here.
Tina Oberlin.
President.
Mark Sepiti.
Here.
Nate Albert.
Here.
Joe Kubal.
Here.
Thank you.
Okay, you have before you the minutes of the work session held on July 14th, 2025. Motion would be in order to approve.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Alderwoman Gazal, seconded by Alderman Jefferson, to approve the minutes of the work session of July 14th, 2025. Questions or comments? Roll call please.
Scott Dyke.
Yes.
Angelo DiSario.
Yes.
Darrell Jefferson.
Yes.
Claudia Gazal.
Yes.
Tina Oberlin.
Yes.
Mark Sepiti.
Yes.
Nate Albert.
Yes.
Joe Kubal.
Yes.
Motion carries. Thank you.
Okay, I'm asking for approval of the minutes of the City Council meeting held on July 21st, 2025. Motion would be in order?
So moved, Mr. Mayor.
Second.
We have a motion by Alderman Jefferson, seconded by Alderwoman Gazal for the approval of the minutes of the City Council meeting held on July 21st, 2025. Questions or comments? Roll call please.
Angelo DiSario.
Yes.
Darrell Jefferson.
Yes.
Claudia Gazal.
Yes.
Tina Oberlin.
Yes.
Mark Sepiti.
Yes.
Nate Albert.
Abstain.
Joe Kubal.
Yes.
Scott Dyke.
Yes.
Motion carries. Thank you.
And I'm asking for approval of the minutes of the work session held on July 28th, 2025 with the changes that were made on the bottom of the third page. Motion would be in order?
So moved with the changes.
Second.
Motion by Alderman Jefferson, seconded by Alderwoman Gazal for the approval of the minutes of the work session held on July 28th, 2025 with the changes on Page 3. Questions or comments? Roll call.
Tina Oberlin.
Yes.
Mark Sepiti.
Yes.
Nate Albert.
Yes.
Joe Kubal.
Yes.
Scott Dyke.
Yes.
Angelo DiSario.
Abstain.
Darrell Jefferson.
Yes.
Claudia Gazal.
Yes.
Motion carries. Thank you.
Okay, moving on to our City Attorney, Mike Stiff. Good evening, Mike.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I do not have any agenda items, but any questions, I'll be happy to entertain. I think I'll be talking a little bit more later in the agenda, but for now, questions.
Questions of City Attorney. All right, thanks, Mike.
Thank you.
Moving on to our City Administrator. Our City Administrator Blaine Wing is on vacation this week, so I am going to turn his portion over to our Police Chief, Ed Clark, for approval. Ed?
Evening, Mayor and Council. What City Administrator Blaine had this evening was he's seeking a resolution approving hardship assistance program for water customers still needing to replace their existing water meter with the city's new smart water meters. This was discussed at last week's work session, attached that as well as the policy for both options for the hardship regarding the smart meters. I'd be seeking approval.
So moved, just presented.
Second.
Motion by Alderperson Oberlin, seconded by Alderwoman Gazal for a resolution approving a hardship assistance program for water customers still needing to replace their existing water meter with the city's new smart water meters. Questions or comments? Roll call.
Darrell Jefferson.
Yes.
Claudia Gazal.
Yes.
Tina Oberlin.
Yes.
Mark Sepiti.
Yes.
Nate Albert.
Yes.
Joe Kubal.
Yes.
Scott Dyke.
Yes.
Angelo DiSario.
Yes.
Motion carries Resolution 1333.
Thank you very much. I would entertain any questions, and I will forward them to the Administrator when he arrives back.
We love seeing all your emails this weekend.
Yeah, yes.
Blaine will be back next Monday. Okay, moving on to our Public Works Department. Our Interim Director of Public Works.
Yeah, Public Works is here for one item alone, the approval of Pay Request Number 31 for Vistaring Construction and with direction to send it to the IEPA for approval and disbursement for a total amount of $1,036,996.72.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Alderwoman Gazal, seconded by Alderman Jefferson for approval of Pay Request Number 31 for Vistaring Construction Incorporated with direction to send it to IEPA for approval and disbursement for a total amount of $1,036,996.72. Questions or comments? Roll call.
Mark Sepiti.
Yes.
Nate Albert.
Yes.
Joe Kubal.
Yes.
Scott Dyke.
Yes.
Angelo DiSario.
Yes.
Darrell Jefferson.
Yes.
Claudia Gazal.
Yes.
And Tina Oberlin.
Yes.
Motion carries. Thank you.
Anything else, Julius?
No, sir, that's it for Public Works. Thank you.
Any questions for Public Works? I, uh, just a comment. I don't know if Blaine told you some of the things I thanked you for getting done for me or that, to mention to you.
Sure, if you want to thank me again, that'd be great.
Well, if you heard him already from him.
I did.
But you want to hear from the horse's mouth, that's up to you.
No, I did hear that, and I will relay that to Public Works. I think that they deserve a lot of recognition. They've worked really hard, and thank you for that.
All right, I was just wondering also, on Oakland Avenue with the north of Public Works there, before the tracks, the weeds there?
Yeah, I'm very familiar with that. I'm waiting for quotes right now from a couple of different landscapers that are giving some really good ideas of how to handle that area, maybe once and for all, rather than mowing it and spending $10,000 annually. We can do something better and cheaper and long-lasting, so we're working on that.
All right, thanks, appreciate it.
You're welcome.
Thanks again.
Thank you.
I have a question. Julius, I sent you an email on the 25th of July about the 1700 block of Coro with some tagging on garages and houses that need to be checked on. Did we look into that?
Yeah, I believe the Building Department is kind of investigating that and looking into that, and Public Works will also. So I think we need to kind of circle back on that topic and kind of come up with what we're going to do.
Okay.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Okay, thanks, Julius. Moving on to our City Engineer, Ron Wedeman. Good evening, Ron. If Blaine was here, he would excuse Julius, but he's done, and we don't need him no more. So, if you want to do that, or if Ed wants to be an administrative?
Completely up to you.
Yeah, if that's Council's wish, he can be excused, absolutely.
You're the boss.
That's why I'm asking if you want to do it, acting administrator.
I'm dismissed, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, Ron, all yours.
I'm just going to take Item 6. I believe Item 7 will be under Community Development, I believe, because that was discussed by Don last week. I'm seeking a motion to approve a resolution approving an agreement for design-related, designing-related services for the new SCADA system located at the East Receiving Station for the Grand Prairie Water Commission Delivery Points buying between the City of Crest Hill, Will County, Illinois, and Strand Associates for an amount of $43,000, and this was discussed at the last workshop.
So moved, just presented.
Second.
Motion by Alderperson Oberlin, seconded by Alderman Dyke for a resolution approving design and related services for the new water SCADA system located in the Eastern Receiving Station for Grand Prairie Water Commission Delivery Point buying between the City of Crest Hill, Will County, Illinois, and Strand Associates Incorporated for an amount of $43,000. Questions or comments in regards to the motion? Roll call, please.
Claudia Gazal.
Yes.
Tina Oberlin.
Yes.
Mark Sepiti.
Yes.
Nate Albert.
Yes.
Joe Kubal.
Yes.
Scott Dyke.
Yes.
Angelo DiSario.
Yes.
Darrell Jefferson.
Yes.
Motion carries Resolution 1334.
That's all I had, unless Council has some questions of me? Any questions of City Engineer? Okay, thanks, Ron. Moving on to Community Development. Our Community and Economic Development Director, Dan Ritter. Good evening, Dan.
All right, sorry, working on the microphone here. So I believe we have two items. We have, the first one is approval of a resolution approving the policy regarding permit fee waivers for the City of Crest Hill Homeowners Association Road and Alley Projects. This was discussed at, in length, at the last work session. This policy and ordinance narrowed it down to just the road projects, as was discussed there, and then we'll continue to look in if there's any need beyond that to adjust our policies, but this is really just for roads, sidewalks, alleys, and it's 100% fee waiver.
So moved, just presented.
Second.
And a motion by Alderman Albert, seconded by Alderwoman Gazal for a resolution approving a policy regarding permit fee waivers for City of Crest Hill Homeowners Association's Road and Alley Projects. Questions or comments?
Mayor, just one comment that I have. Depending on how this vote goes, I just want to remind the HOAs that they still need to go through the Building Department and get proper inspections. It's just that this ordinance would be to waive the fees. That's all. Thank you.
Yes, I had a question or comment. I know Blaine had mentioned that he was going to contact other communities to see what they do and how they handle it. I'd like to find out what the results of his investigation, what he found out before us voting on it.
That was for the other stuff, not for the streets.
I thought it was part of this also.
Not for the street, because he already had the answer for the street, but he didn't have an answer for the other ones. That's for the other projects.
Any questions? Roll call.
Joe Kubal.
Yes.
Scott Dyke.
Uh, no.
Angelo DiSario.
Yes.
Darrell Jefferson.
Yes.
Claudia Gazal.
Yes.
Tina Oberlin.
Yes.
Mark Sepiti.
Yes.
Nate Albert.
Yes.
The next item I had was the approval of a resolution in authorizing the execution of a Second Amendment to contract for purchase of real estate dated July 15th, 2024, buying between the City of Crest Hill and QuickTrip Corporation for the purchase of property located at 1610 Plainfield Road in Crest Hill. This is an amendment to the contract for QuickTrip to purchase the former City Hall property. It would extend that contract out an additional three months as we're waiting on IDOT reviews. There was a delay there from IDOT, and Charlie is here from QuickTrip. He's the real estate manager.
Charlie, just your name for the record, please.
Charlie Tarwater, QuickTrip Corporation. So Mr. Ritter did a good job summarizing what our amendment is seeking. We are seeking an additional 90 days for DOT to review. This is very similar to the First Amendment, in which case DOT had not reviewed. It has been, since been roughly four months or three and a half or so, they have still not reviewed. Myself, our traffic engineer, Mr. Minster, and Mr. Whitehead have followed up with DOT on a weekly basis since the approval of the First Amendment, which was on April 21st, proceeded to hear nothing, nothing, nothing until late June. We were told if and when we review your application, we will let you know. At one point in late July, IDOT confirmed with Mayor Solomon, as well as Mr. Whitehead and Mr. Minster, that the review had slipped through the cracks, and they had not gotten started on it. So they had advised that they would get started on it right now, but unfortunately, that leads us to the end of the contractual period, which is why we are here today, seeking an additional 90 days to hopefully get over and get through that DOT review process.
And I did receive an email today from a gentleman from IDOT, so I'm hoping that this will be taken care of as soon as possible.
Fingers crossed, for the record.
Did you get any confirmation from them directly to QuickTrip?
From DOT?
Yeah.
At this point, no, that we sent them our updated application. They provided us two additional comments. We sent that back last week, and they confirmed that they got it, but not that they have started on it or any sort of comments on the actual TIS. So it seems like they are communicating, for the most part, through the city, either Mr. Minster, Mr. Whitehead, or even Mayor Solomon here. But the initial, this amendment will look very similar to the First Amendment, $10,000 non-refundable for 90 days.
Okay, any other questions, Charlie? Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, roll call please, Chris.
We need motions first.
Motion.
Make a motion.
Second. Motion by Alderwoman Gazal, seconded by Alderman Albert for a resolution approving and authorizing the execution of a Second Amendment to contract for purchase of real estate dated July 15th, 2024, buying between the City of Crest Hill and QuickTrip Corporation for the purchase of property located at 1610 Plainfield Road, Crest Hill, Illinois. Questions or comments in regards to the motion? Roll call, please.
Scott Dyke.
Yes.
Angelo DiSario.
Yes.
Darrell Jefferson.
Yes.
Claudia Gazal.
Yes.
Tina Oberlin.
Yes.
Mark Sepiti.
No.
Nate Albert.
Yes.
And Joe Kubal.
Yes.
Motion carries. Thank you. Resolution 1336.
Okay. Anything else, Dan?
Nope, that's all I have.
Any questions of Community Development?
I just, something quick. I just want to confirm that an ordinance, our ordinance, are an ordinance, and we have some people giving direction for the staff member from your department about not giving tickets for certain things. It doesn't matter if you're association or not association, it's City ordinance, it's City ordinance, that we were not waived. If something that we're going to do for association that needs to come to the council for like garbage or whatever, like it needs to take a group here to decide if we're going to change an ordinance.
Yep, we enforce all our ordinances.
Because your staff were directed not to do that, and that is wrong.
Yeah, we enforce any ordinances on the books equally and across the board, so.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
Okay, thanks, Dan. Moving on to our Police Department. Police Chief, Ed Clark. Good evening, Ed.
You want me to jump in real quick, Ed?
Yes, sir.
Okay. This was discussed last week at the work session, an executive session. Blaine put this on for action tonight, but also put on as an option, as you see, Item 13, an executive session under 122(c)(2) as well. I've spoken with both of the council members who were absent last week and the rest of the council, and so this, again, was an optional collect, or an optional executive session. So my understanding, Ed can present the MOU and the resolution, but this can be voted on once his presentation is done without the need for executive session.
Okay, I'll begin, Mayor and Council. We did discuss this last, at last week's work session, executive session. This is the MOU with the union and members, sworn officers, regarding the retention and recruitment bonus. I know we had a lot of questions that I hope we had answered. I know Mr. Smith, Stiff, has spoken with, individually with you about this. This is with the grant through the Illinois Training and Standards Board. This has to do with two payments to officers, sworn officers regarding retention. One payment would be in, in or about 30 days from August 25th of this year. That would be until December. The next payment would be in January, and that would go till February of 2027. This is an effort to keep sworn officers and keep us solvent as far as the department. There's also a $10,000 out of that that will go to a training video for our promotion, so we can promote the department for all the goods that it has, and I would be seeking that approval of that resolution.
So moved, just presented.
Second. We have a motion by Alderperson Oberlin, seconded by Alderman Albert for a memorandum of understanding between the City of Crest Hill and Metropolitan Alliance of Police Labor Council. Questions or comments?
Just one comment. I hope it's made very clear that this money was grant money.
Correct.
Not taxpayer money. It's not city funds. It's grant money.
Yes, the other only caveat to that was the last officer that we did have in our budget, where we do have funds available to help with everybody.
I know my question that we didn't answer was if somebody gave the money back, where did it go?
Yes, I placed two calls with the Illinois Training and Standards Board. I did talk with Mike, and if we do cross that bridge, we will make sure that we play our due diligence on that and make sure we're not just putting in general fund. It will go back to the Training and Standards Board if that's what they choose to do at that time. I'll have that. Yeah, we are, we are going to make sure. You don't want to mess with that kind of money.
No, but you didn't know, and you're going to find out. And he asked me if I had any questions, and I had forgotten.
Yes.
I'm very sorry. Don't growl at me.
No, I did put two calls into their legal, and I'm going to keep hounding them. I don't know if they're just short-staffed in the summer or something right now, but I will get that answer for them.
And we'll have the answer way before we ever have to decide what to do with it. We'll press them for it. And I should add that in your packets, your, the private packets, since we thought we were going to go into executive session, there is a resolution approving this. It's not on the agenda as a resolution, so there will be, the motion should be to approve a resolution approving the MOU, because that resolution has been drafted, and Blaine had it.
I will amend my motion to approve the mentioned resolution as stated.
For the second?
Same with the second.
Okay. Roll call please, Chris.
Angelo DiSario.
Yes.
Darrell Jefferson.
Yes.
Claudia Gazal.
Yes. I said yes.
Oh, thank you. Tina Oberlin.
Yes.
Mark Sepiti.
Yes.
Nate Albert.
Yes.
Joe Kubal.
Yes.
Scott Dyke.
Yes.
Motion carries Resolution 1337.
Thank you very much. I have my sidekick kind of sitting here. I want to thank him publicly for all the hard work on this. It was, grants are a lot of paperwork, and you got to keep on it, and he's going to have some more work to do once we get this up and running, so I wanted to publicly thank him for his hard work.
Well, I'd like to thank you too, but could you look for one for city officials, please? Function looking.
Dig deep.
Okay, any other questions of Police Chief? All right, thanks, Ed.
Thank you.
Thanks, Ryan. Okay, moving on to the Mayor's Report. I do not have any agenda items this evening. I just have one announcement. I've been working the last few weeks with Bridget from Representative Natalie Manley's office, and we are going to be hosting a mobile DMV vehicle here at City Hall on October 20th from 9:00 to 2:00. There'll be information put on the website next week in regards to all of the items that this mobile DMV unit can take care of instead of you going to one of the brick and mortar DMVs and waiting in line for hours and hours. So again, that's going to be on October 20th. It's going to be held in this room. The van will be here. They'll be, we'll be using the council room on that day for the times. So give us just about another week and a half, and we'll get all the information that they sent to us up on the website and on Facebook, and you can certainly see of all the things that you can get taken care of if you need to at this time.
This is for all ages or just older?
I do not believe they do the regular new licenses with the driving. This would just be a lot of the office stuff that they are going to offer. There's a whole list of items.
What about Real IDs, no?
Yes, Real IDs are on there, yeah. And it tells you what to bring and everything else, so all the information will be right on that website. Okay, any questions? I'll be glad to try to answer them.
Mr. Mayor, do we know if they're going to require appointments for that? Because if you go to the regular DMV office, you have to have appointment now before they even think about letting you in.
Correct. There's no more waiting.
I can find that out. There was no conversation about that. I just assumed she said she needed, you know, a certain amount of chairs, which we certainly have in here and everything else, so.
And when will the web, when the, that will link to the website be posted?
Next Thursday or Friday when Maribel gets back, because she's on vacation. Okay, moving on to our City Clerk's Report. Christine Verche Hall. Good evening, Chris.
Good evening. The only thing I have to report is the final reminder of our citywide garage sale, which will be August 14th through the 17th, the deadline to have your name on or your address on the list. or your address on the list is August 12th. Permits for it are available in the clerk's office Monday through Friday from 8:00 a.m. to 4:30 p.m., and there's a $5 fee for that. And that's all I have to report.
Any questions of city clerk? All right, thanks, Chris. Moving on to our city treasurer's report. Our treasurer, Jamie Malloy. Good evening, Jamie.
Good evening. I'm looking for approval of a list of bills issued through August 5th, 2025, in the amount of $2,060,141.33.
Motion would be in order?
Some move.
Second. We have a motion by Alderman Jefferson, seconded by Alderman DiSario, for approval of the list of bills. Questions or comments? Roll call.
Nate Albert.
Yes.
Joe Kubal.
Yes.
Scott Dyke.
Yes.
Angelo DiSario.
Yes.
Darrell Jefferson.
Yes.
Claudia Gazal.
Yes.
Tina Oberlin.
Yes.
Mark Sapiti.
Yes.
Motion carries. Thank you.
And this is just for everybody's knowledge, regular and overtime payroll from July 14th, 2025, to July 27th, 2025, was in the amount of $274,335.92. Secondly, quarterly compensation time buyback for the period of May 1st, 2025, through July 31st, 2025, was in the amount of $24,588.8. And that's it.
Any questions of treasurer? All right, thanks, Jamie. Moving on to unfinished business. We have nothing. Anyone? New business? Anybody? Committee layas and reports? Anyone?
I do. Just, I know it's kind of early, but the Winter Festival will be held this year on December 6th. Just stay tuned for more information.
What date, Claudia?
December 6th, Saturday.
Okay.
Okay, city council comments? Positive city council comments? Anything you'd like to share with your constituents?
I do.
We'll begin with Alderperson Oberlin this evening.
Well, Alderwoman Gazal and I were speaking with Jennifer Bertino-Terrant about a new program Will County is offering for children, and it's the Dolly Hardin's Imagination Library, where children get free books, one free book a month, up until their fifth birthday. And you can go to the website. They're looking not only for people to register their children to get these free books, but for people to donate to support this wonderful program, because literacy is tragically important in this country, and anything we can do to encourage that is a plus. So if you want to go to the Will County website, all the information will be there. Hopefully, we can get a link to ours to get it posted as well. It's a wonderful cause, right, Claudia?
Yeah, and it's also bilingual.
Correct.
And they will get 12 books a year.
Yeah, once a month, and it can be in English or Spanish. Right, good point.
Alderman Sapiti?
I have nothing tonight.
Alderman Albert?
Yeah, Mayor, just like to make an announcement for the annual luau for the Crest Hill Alliance that will be held on Sunday, August 31st. It's Labor Day, the day before Labor Day, at St. Charles Park from 12:00 p.m. to 10:00 p.m. The annual luau hosts a car show, craft vendor fair, bingo all day long, the money wheel, food, drinks. It's a good time, and of course, entertainment all day long. So 12 to 10 at St. Charles Park on Sunday, August 31st. Thanks, Mayor.
Alderman Kubal?
Nothing to add, Mayor.
Alderman Dyke?
I have nothing at this time, Mayor.
Alderman DiSario?
Nothing at this time, Mayor.
Alderman Jefferson?
Nothing at this time.
Alderwoman Gazal?
Just a reminder, school is about to start within a week or two in some areas. Slow down, please. Be cautious, all the kids, especially the first couple of weeks. That's all, Mayor.
Okay, public comment. Anyone like to address city council? Please step to the podium, state your name for the record. Your address is optional. Let the record show that no one has approached the podium. Mike, there is not a need for an executive session tonight, then?
There is not.
Motion to adjourn, Mayor.
Second. We have a motion for an adjournment by Alderman Dyke, seconded by Alderman DiSario. Roll call, please.
Darrell Jefferson.
Yes.
Claudia Gazal.
Yes.
Tina Oberlin.
Yes.
Mark Sapiti.
Yes.
Nate Albert.
Yes.
Joe Kubal.
Yes.
Scott Dyke.
Yes.
Angelo DiSario.
Yes.
Motion carries. Thank you.
Okay, meeting is adjourned at 7:30 p.m. Thank you, and good evening.